We'll call a meeting to order. Roll call.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Ms. Julie Wilson is on her way. She'll join the meeting shortly. Ms. Brenda Hickenbottom.
Present.
Mr. Richard Kazook.
Present.
And Ms. Sheila Wicker.
Present. Public comment? Anything anyone wishes to talk about before we get started? Okay. Adoption of the agenda.
Of course, this is a special call board meeting. I do not have anything, of course, can add to it, and I don't have anything to remove, Mrs. Wicker, so if there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I may motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll wait a second.
No.
Okay, Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Brenda.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker.
Yes.
Fiscal year 2022 audit report.
We have Mr. Joe Montgomery here, CPA with White and Company. He'll be here to present our fiscal year 22 audit. And I know you all have already had a hard copy. It's in your board packet and another packet there in front of you today, but we'll just turn that over to you, Mr. Joe.
I would like to say this will be the most riveting part of the meeting.
It always is.
Probably not, but I brought you reports, and those are my Christmas gifts.
Oh, thank you.
Better than nothing.
I appreciate it last night when I was reading through it.
There you go. I will present the audit report for June 30, 2022. If you look the first three pages, that is our independent auditor's report.
And Joe, just, I'm sorry, real quick, Mrs. Carnes has another meeting at the same time of this special call, but that's why she's not here. I just want to tell you all that. He was presenting that, and she hated not to be here, but she had another obligation. Sorry.
That's all right. It's our independent auditor's report on your financial statements. It's what we call an unmodified opinion, meaning it is a clean opinion on your financial statements. Pages four through 10 is management's discussion and analysis that were prepared by Ms. Carnes. We have checked it. Everything looks reasonably well compared to what the financial statements say. This is a good summary. If you don't want to read all the financial statements, this will tell you what happened during the year. Page number 11 is your statement of net position. This is the balance sheet for the entire district. At the end of the year, June 30, 2022, you had total current assets of $9,348,000. That's $710,000 higher than the previous year. And of that cash, of $4.9 million, that's $883,000 higher than the previous year. Total assets deferred outflows, $73,543,000, $1.4 million improvement from the previous year. Your total current liabilities were $3,390,000, an increase of $126,000. And your total liabilities and deferred outflows, $57,929,000 is a $337,000 increase. And your total net position was $15,614,000, which is a $3.9 million improvement over the last year. On the next page is statement of activities. Basically, your progress lost for the year. For the year ended June 30, 2022, you had total revenues of $43.5 million. That was down $748,000 compared to 2021. Your total expenses, $39,644,000, up $2.9 million from the previous year. And at the bottom, you had a change in net position. That's your revenues exceeded your expenses by 3.9 million in the current year, which brings your net position ending to $15,614,000. That 3.9 million, that is a very solid number for a district this size, slightly down from last year, but last year you had some extra federal and state grants that came in due to COVID. Some of those went away, which caused it to go down, but you still have a good, solid year this year. Pages 13 is your balance sheet for your funds. I want to focus on the general fund because that's the only fund you all actually have control over. Everything else is controlled by either grantors or legislation. Your general fund had total assets of $7.350,000. That's a $759,000 improvement over last year. Total liabilities, $120,000. That's a $152,000 decrease. And your general fund's total fund balance was $7,231,000. That's a $909,000 improvement over last year. You're going to see good improvement, good numbers. Page 14 shows the differences between the two balance sheets. Your largest portion is your fixed assets net to depreciation of $58.7 million. Long-term bonds payable of $39.9. And we have our net pension liability and net other post-employment benefits liabilities at $8 million and at $6.5 million. Again, these are items that are handed down by the state. These are not items you all are making payments on, but you do have to report those, okay? Page number 15 is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. Again, I'm going to focus on the general fund because that's the one you all do have control on. Total revenues, $27.5 million. That is a $1.2 million improvement over last year. $900,000 of that improvement was due to state grants. Total expenditures, $27.9 million. That's a $3.5 million increase in the prior year. And your change in fund balance, $909,000 positive change in the general fund, which is down from last year, but again, we've got a good positive number here, which is what I like to see. So it's going in the right direction, and that brings your fund balance for the general fund to $7.2 million, which is a good contingency. You go to page number 17. This is your statement of position for proprietary funds. You only have one enterprise fund, and that is the food service. For the year ended June 30, 2022, you had total current assets of $1,410,000. That's $417,000 higher than 2021. Total assets and deferred outflows, $2,292,000. That's a $341,000 increase over the prior year. Your total liabilities and deferred inflows, $3,617,000, which is a $44,000 decrease. And total net position was a negative $1,325,000, but that is a $385,000 improvement. And that negative is a little bit of a, how do I say this, misnomer, because if you look in the middle, you have non-current liabilities, your net pension liability, and your net post-employment benefits liabilities combined, they're $2.8 million. That's a reduction on your net position. And again, those numbers are not something from the activity here at the district, but again, handed down from the state based upon your pensions that your county employee retirement system has to do with the classified people. So if we take that out, you would be to the positive of about $1.5 million net position. Page number 18 is statement of revenue, expenses, and changes in net position for your food service. Total operating revenues, $149,000. That's a $110,000 improvement from last year. The reason we had that improvement was in the prior year, we had COVID going on, so you weren't serving much in your cafeteria. Whereas in 22, you were back to being in school teaching. Operating expenses, $2.5 million, almost $2.6 million, almost exactly the same as last year. It's about $7,000 increase. Non-operating revenue, $2,814,000. That's up $148,000. The reason you have an increase in this is because during 2022, the USDA, Department of Education reimbursed the district, all districts, at the summer feeding rate rather than what normally is done. The summer feeding rate is a higher rate of reimbursement if we reduce. So there was an increase in the federal reimbursements. Overall, you had total net income of $385,000, which is a $226,000 improvement over 2021. The next page, statement of cash flow, shows where the money came in and where the money went out. Overall, you had a net increase in cash of $180,415 this year. If you would now turn to page number 32. At the bottom, this shows your long-term liabilities, activity. At the beginning of the year, you had $56,606,000 in long-term liabilities. Minor increase for food sick leave this year. You had reductions of $5,435,000 and an ending balance of long-term liabilities of $51,321,000. And cash flows to cover the current year's portion of the long-term liabilities is $2,229,000. That's what we're paying out for the current year. If you will now go to page number 36. At the bottom, I talk about the net pension liability, and I talk about the net other post-employment benefits liability. At the bottom, this is the net pension liability for this district. The district's proportion share of CERS, its county employee retirement system, which is on your classified employees, is $10,299,000 underfunded just for this district. The teacher retirement system, which is 100% the state's liability, but we have to report it here, for this district alone, is underfunded by $46,240,000. So that gives you an idea of the...
Again, have to report it, but it's not on our shoulders.
You're not paying this, okay? But we do have to show it, but it also lets you know where these pensions are.
Right, and that's just, I mean, think about Kentucky and one school district.
That's just this district, okay? So you take them all together, you've got a big hole. But it's good to know what it is. You're not paying on it, and I had a board member, I think a couple of years ago, said, "Well, what if they send us a bill?" And I said, "Whoever last wanted that, just turn the lights on." Because I don't know any districts that can pony up $80, $90 million. Districts your size.
Legislature is making it better, though, by funding their teachers. The legislature has made it better, though.
They have?
They have, yeah.
In the teachers' retirement.
And there was a reduction this year in the liability. Part of that was that. The other part was in 2021, the stock market screened up. I expect the liability to go up next year because the stock market has screened down.
It's down.
So, you know, what the market does is what this does in the opposite direction.
That's a good point.
Or actually, the same direction. Market goes down, this gets worse. Your OPEB liability, you go to page 42. This is the teacher retirement system's other post-employment benefits liability. This is health insurance for retirees. Your proportion share of the teacher retirement system, OPEB, is $4,105,000. The state's share of that is $3,333,000. So the health insurance liability for your retirees who are certified, $7,438,000. And that's just this district. And for your classified, if you go to page 48, that shows you the last of those liabilities. For your classified employees, it's 100% your liability, $3,92,000. So between all of them, you're getting close to $20 million underfunded just for this district. If you will go to page number 52, two notes on here. At the top, we have note P, which says on behalf payments. This shows the detail of what the state of Kentucky, Kentucky Department of Education, paid on behalf expenses for this district. For this district, it was $7,945,000. The largest portion says teacher retirement system. That is the retirement portion, $3,691,000. And right below that is the OPEB that they paid in 282. And then health insurance for this district, they paid $3,861,000. At the bottom, sorry, in the middle, note Q, net position and fund balance is restated. Government Accounting Standards Board came out with what we call GASB 87, statement number 87. Now, these guys never call me up and ask my opinion before they do.
I understand.
Okay? And I don't get it, because if they did, some of this wouldn't happen, because it doesn't do a lot of value, in my opinion, to the financial statement. But what 87 is, when you had operating leases, these are leases where you just rent something, and at the end of the lease, they come and take it back, okay? Topiers are a good example.
Yep.
Previously, whenever you wrote the check to pay your lease, you expensed it. Rent, rent expense, makes sense to me. But somebody was either drinking something really good or doing something, came up with a great idea of, let's show this as a long-term liability, the lease, and let's show your right of use as an asset. Okay? So we had to go through calculations, going all the way back to the beginning of the lease, to bring those leases forward to June 30, 2021, or July 2021, and restate your net position for the liability and the right-to-use asset. The impact for this district was a $744 adjustment. Now, normally, for something like that, I wouldn't, it's not material, has no impact. They said you cannot call it immaterial. You must do it. I have one district, it was a $41 adjustment, but it took, I had to go through three hours of calculations to get to the rule of thumb. So that being said, we had a $711 downward adjustment to your beginning net position. So we took from $13,421.7, $94 to $13,421, and $83. And below that shows that right of use and what your liability for that lease is. If you will go to page number, it's a two-pager, page number 75. We call this the SEFA. It's the Statement of Schedule of Expectations of Federal Awards. This shows this district's federal awards, how much was expended by this district. For the year ended June 30, 2022, your federal assistance that was expended by this district Of that, your school food service was $2.2 million, almost $2.3 million. And your other biggie is the COVID elementary and secondary emergency relief funds. That's the ESR money. This district got expended $4,384,000 of that money this year. This year, 2000, I believe, 2022, '23 is the last year for this, okay?
Yeah, September 30th, isn't it, 2024?
Yep.
Could you talk just a little bit, and I know they've heard it, but when you note something as a major program, it's a little bit more time and eyes that you spend on that particular program for that particular year.
How it works, and it's called...
Just so you all know, it's...
It's called a single audit.
Right.
Okay? Federal government says that if an entity expends $750,000 or more in federal money, they must have what's called a single audit. And a single audit is testing compliance with what the government says you can spend the money on, do with it. And the other side of it is, is to test controls over compliance, meaning, does this district have internal controls that are designed to detect and correct or prevent the federal money from being misspent? Okay? The federal government tells me, and every other auditor out there, that if one grant is $750,000 or more, it's a type A, and must be tested every third, at least once every three years. So we go back and we look, say, when was the last time this grant was tested? If it hasn't been tested in the last two years, we must test it. Okay? So we denote here who fell into that category of we must test. When we test it, we pull a sample. We test the expenditures, what it was spent on, and compare that to what the federal government says you can spend the money on. Sometimes it's a matter of you can spend it on, and ESR is a good example. You can buy a bus with ESR money, straight out, but you must get approval by KDE in writing prior to expending that money for the bus, okay? So we have, they have rules on what you can and can't do, and what you must do before you do things. We test that on the major programs. So a good example, I have a independent school district that has never, ever, ever received enough money even come close. 2021, they spent $232,000 of the federal money. With ESR, they spent $1.4 million this year, okay?
Got triggered.
So, it triggered it.
Yeah.
So what happened was, an independent school district that normally takes about two weeks of audit work became a six and a half, almost seven week one, okay? Because we have to document controls, we have to document who does what, then we have to test those compliance. And there's more than just that. For example, food service, we have to look and see what your procurement document is, because federal government says a procurement document has to be a certain length for food service. So we test that. So there's a lot that goes on with those. ESR, the ESR money, we tested it in 2020, '21. They came out with the guidance this year, and they said, "Don't have to test it if it was tested last year, unless the amount expended in any grant was more than 20% of the total expended." Well, ESR is its own grant, so they might as well just say, "Test it." So that's what we did.
And it has a lot of implications for other things that we have to submit in other grants, because if we're considered, if we were to be marked and considered a high-risk guarantee, so the state makes us report that on some grants, yes, we're a high risk based upon some industry fine. We're not, thankfully.
And that's on page 77, okay? This is, and this really should be front and center, because this is just a summary on your federal money. This is our schedule of findings and question costs. We didn't have any findings or question costs that needed to be reported to the federal or state government, okay? Had we had something, had you misspent, say, ESR money, had you bought a bus without getting approval, we'd have a question cost here.
Yep.
No, we would have a question cost, but we would have an internal control issue because controls should have caught that before you bought the bus. Somebody should have said, "Hey, have we asked?" Okay? We didn't have any of that. So we have a lot of no's here, which is what you want.
And that's a whole lot of money between Ms. Dix's program with special education and food service and the COVID money.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to brag on that for just a minute, because that's outstanding to have that amount with, between those three programs, and we're still marked as a low-risk audit team.
Yes, and you are a low-risk audit team. The low-risk qualification is, did we have findings and question costs in the prior two years, okay? Which have to be material, okay? Meaning that you all spent, right at $10 million of federal money this year. Had we found $500,000 in question costs, next year you would be high risk. But if it was below that, you could stay low risk, even though we had something that was a finding. The independent district that popped over, and it's funny, because nobody listens to me, because I told them in April, I said, "Y'all get close, y'all need to quit spending money for nobody."
Keep one at the threshold.
Yeah, just, you're about $50,000. Wait, stop, you know? But they were high risk, because they hadn't had a single audit.
Yep.
And if you haven't had a single audit in the last two years, you're automatically considered high risk. But this is clean. There was nothing we needed to report to the federal government or state. And behind that, page 79 is our auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. Glenn, we have an unmodified opinion, telling them that we did not find any material issues with your internal controls, nor did we find significant deficiencies. Significant deficiencies are lower than material, but high enough that they would need to be reported had we found them. And page number 81 is our report on compliance over your federal programs, which we just discussed. Again, it's an unmodified opinion, letting them know that we found no question costs or problems with your internal controls over your federal awards. Page 84 is management letter. Typically, we will have one or two minor items that we do see while we're doing the audit. They don't rise to the level of a significant deficiency. Typically, it's a little bit of human error, but we see one or two or three instances of it, and we want to bring it to people's attention and to ensure we don't get a systematic problem that does become a significant deficiency. And lastly, on page 86, this is our report to those charged with governance. We are required to report to you all how the audit went. This is kind of, this is basically a clean report on people. We didn't have any issues. We did not have to make any material adjustments in order for your financial statements to be free of material misstatement. We had no problems with scheduling. We didn't have any arguments with management on accounting issues. So again, letting you all know that it was good to be audit from the process.
I didn't hear Ms. Carnes raise her voice at all.
Not once.
I just want to thank, say thank you to the board and to our faculty, staff administration, because as Joe's talked to us before, you know, this is not just a one-person process that makes this work. It takes everybody with the internal controls and everything. And I want to thank you, Mr. Montgomery, because you're always very accessible to us throughout the school year. He doesn't just come at the end of fiscal year and go through things. He's always, you know, he's told us before, "I'd rather you ask me than do something wrong and then we have to clean it up or something." So he's very accessible to us throughout the year, so I appreciate you.
It's easier to give guidance and help do it right than it is for me to try to help you fix it after.
Yeah, absolutely. And we appreciate that.
And some things I can't fix.
Sure.
Carol, I'd rather not have those.
Yeah, absolutely.
But you're very accessible to us, and we appreciate that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Again, just appreciate all our schools, faculty, staff administration to have that unmodified, clean opinion that we always strive for.
Any questions, comments, complaints? I'll listen to anybody.
No complaints this year.
No complaints, there we go. We strive every year.
I love it. My good findings. Did you hear? She said she looked.
I told, yeah, I told one of our staff whenever we get the independent... I told, yeah, I told, I told one of our staff whenever we get the NDA from Marla, I said, now, you're going to go through here and you're going to check these numbers. Then I'm going through here and checking these numbers. I said, because we have one board member that likes to call me out for giving a few dollars off when you add it across.
Can't be on your toes.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Not a problem, not a problem. I like doing it.
Well, I recommend approval of fiscal year 2022, District Audit that was submitted to the Kentucky Department of Education.
I'll make a motion, we approve the fiscal year 2022 District Audit that was submitted to Kentucky Department of Education.
I'll second it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Chris, Russell County Middle School's Comprehensive School Improvement Plan.
Of course, attached is Russell County Middle School's Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, what we refer to as the CSIP. As previously noted, the Russell County Middle School is designated as a targeted support improvement, TSI school due to the subgroup of students with disabilities based upon the school year 2122 data. Russell County Middle School Principal, Mr. Wayne Ackerman, is at the board meeting to present the CSIP and a copy of the requirements for schools in TSI status is attached for your review. Of course, you all already know, Mr. Ackerman talked a lot about this when we had our test score meeting, but he's going to present and hit the highlights of his school improvement plan that the board subsequently needs to approve.
Appreciate that, Mr. Ford. So our CSIP is the same as it's always been in terms of the state sets those goals. The first one is always math reading, the second one is social studies, science writing, and the third one is achievement gap. So this TSI portion is really an extension of that achievement gap in terms of students with disabilities, that subgroup, and what we're trying to do to make a difference for that subgroup of students with disabilities. So I'll go over that. I know you all have it with you, like Mr. Ford said, I'll hit the high points. Please, at any point you have questions or whatever, let me know, I'll stop and address those as best I can. All right, so the first one deals with leadership, development, support, things we're doing to support the leadership in the school. Be sure we're all trained and know the things we need to know to be sure that growth can happen for those students with disabilities. And then the support piece, we've been to several trainings as a team and also as individuals to help, you know, prepare us and give us ideas, thoughts from the state level, and even some outside of the state. Also, in terms of development, there's been, or support, there's been great, great support from Ms. Sandy Dick and Ms. Melissa McFall. Met with them early on in this process, and just all just collectively sat down and said, you know, what seems to be the best path moving forward? You know, I had a plan, I asked them for their feedback on it. They were great to give me suggestions, thoughts, and then now the opportunity to have support staff of Vicky Kane and Dr. Bartruck in the school, with teachers, sitting down with students and talking with them, it's a game changer. It's great. They're putting lots of time and energy into that process and the effort with our teachers. And, you know, we talked a little bit about two of the turnaround we've had with staff, you know, four, four new special education teachers on our team of six. So that's, that's a lot, you know, to take on all at one time. So to have experienced teachers who know and understand the flow of the classroom, what that looks like in learning, to be able to talk with them and sit next to them, help them, has made a big, big difference. So the next component there that you guys see really, I think, is the biggest piece of this, this is now really the hands and feet to it. It's what are you doing with your time? What are you doing with your resources? What are you doing with your money? So as I mentioned to you guys earlier, in the summer, we knew that there was going to be an issue. We changed the schedule back in the summer. And so what this allows for our--
Yeah, let me say, Mr. Ackerman did, absolutely did not wait for the release of the test scores to start making instructional changes in his middle school. He just said it right there. Test scores, you know, don't come out officially until fall. He was planning when school was out for how he was going to change things in middle school. And that's done, you have a lot of data from a lot of different sources to know you wanted to make some changes, but he's not going to sit and wait until something happens to be, start working towards that by any means. Sorry.
Appreciate it. No, that's fine. So what this has allowed, what the schedule change has allowed, and I could tell you all about it, but let's just say you guys are a special education class, or a group of students that are in a collaborative-type class. When you go to, when all of you go to your ELA or your reading class, there's a special education teacher who comes to that class. The regular ed teacher is teaching that grade-level content, let's just say it's eighth-grade reading. Everybody in the class is getting that content. Once that instruction has been delivered, if maybe three of you need that to be re-taught to you guys, or to you, then that special education teacher takes them out, they reteach that content, and they go over it. In some cases, it may be that some of you guys are on target, on point, and you can stay in that room, but it allows for pull-out. We don't do full resource, meaning that all of you guys would be pulled out to a different room, and a teacher would work with you. You get the grade-level content from that highly qualified grade-level teacher. The piece that has really helped the most this year has been what we call our rise time, which is an intervention time. So at rise time, you know, all of you guys are back in that same class, but at this point, two special education teachers come to that room. And they, and if there's six of you, which there's about anywhere from 11 to 15 in most of our classes, but they would basically split depending on the ability level. So it may be five and six, five go with one, six go with another, it may be six and six depending on the level. But what happens then is, I would work with maybe six of you, and I would be working now only on your independent level. Before, when I worked with you earlier in the day, I worked with you on the eighth-grade content, on eighth-grade reading, but you may be in eighth grade, but reading on a third-grade level. So now when I pull you out in rise time, I'm working, I'm sitting down with you, I'm reiterating, hey, this is what you need for third-grade level, and we use a program called Class Works, which develops programs and a process of lessons to build you from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, and so--
We recall Ms. Vicky and some of them expanded on that a little bit when we talked about our test scores.
So what they do, they, they come in once a week and they just check, that data check, really, to say, hey, you know, our goal is to be sure that everybody at this table's moving, so let me just see some real quick data. Are they moving? Are they not moving? For the ones who are not moving, we try to figure out what it is that's keeping them from moving. If we need to adjust some of the strategies and how we're teaching them, if they are moving them, we're going to reward them. In fact, one of the first rewards is going to come this next December 14th, next Wednesday. Ms. Sandy Dick is approved and is paying for them to get a reward. For all the students who have met the goal, they're going to get to go to a reward trip. So on this component, what we've done with the schedule, where we have our people, how we have the system set up for them to get what they need, we feel very comfortable and confident that it's making gains, and the students are encouraged by that as well. The next piece here, just addressing additional causes why, why these students might be performing low, you know, one of the things that they always talk about at the state level is culture and climate. How do these students feel? Do they feel like you really want to help them, or do they feel like you're really there for them? And we don't believe that's an issue for us at all. On the state scores last year, it showed that in this subpopulation of students with disabilities, they scored higher than any group to say, we believe our teachers care for us, they always help us, they do what we need. So the issue is not that students don't feel that we care for them or want to spend time with them, the issue is that they need help at their grade level, getting caught up. So that's where we've put the focus. And then this last piece here, in terms of evidence-based interventions and target support, the federal government, I think they do a really good job of saying, hey, we give a lot of money to this, we want to ensure that things are being done the right way. So, for example, Russell County Middle School, or any other school that we say is a TSI school, or a CSI school, we want to know that the curriculum that you use, you know, there's state standards, but the curriculum you use, like for math, we use Open Up Resource. They want to say, when you use Open Up Resource, does that meet the federal guidelines? And there's certain specs, you go to like What Works Clearinghouse, it's not Publisher's Clearinghouse, it's What Works Clearinghouse. And there's a list of every, every company that puts out curriculum, and that curriculum is graded. There's people that go through it, and they say, does this meet a highly qualified curriculum, or is it just something a company put out, and pictures are cute, and makes, and makes for good, you know, good resource for people to buy? It has to meet specific regulations, ESSR Evidence Level 1. And all the curriculums that we use are, mean that standard. So that's what that component is about, that the state wants to ensure that that's viable and accurate as you, as we report it to them. So that's the highlights of the TSI, and the program that's in addition to our CSIP. Like I said, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them or talk to you guys about it anymore that you would like.
Sounds like you're in the right direction.
I feel good about it. That really, not because they're in here, but what Ms. Kane and Dr. Bartruck are doing, it's, it's giving these newer teachers too, the confidence that, hey, that is right, keep doing that, that that's what needs to be done. And I think it's going to make a big difference, not just this year, but if you're a new teacher and you've got somebody who's done it before, they can kind of share some of the tricks they have in their bag, it's just, it's a bonus.
I know, I've talked to some of the teachers, and they really like this, the new construction that you have there with the teams.
Yeah. It's been good.
CSIP is a lot of work. I know I sat in on one, one year, and it takes a lot of time to do it, and what you're doing just looks so good, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, and it's not something that's just written on paper or in a binder on a shelf. What Mr. Ackerman is describing and what's in the plan is real. It's actual--
Yeah, and I didn't really talk about that, but we meet every week. And we, we, I meet, well, I meet with the team groups, I meet with the administrative team, and then I meet with them, and we, we, you know, verify, is what we're seeing this week, what we said we needed to see? If it's not, what conversations need to be had? What do we need to adjust? We meet at least once a week to discuss.
You can tell from, from that, that it's used, from the descriptions and everything. And if you're behind in something, particularly math, but reading also, and you don't get that step, then you're lost after that.
And you lose the will to want to get it, because you don't feel like you could catch up.
Yeah. And that's, to me, that's the perfect way to go. I appreciate you, all the work you all do.
Thank you.
And I think it'll show up in Russell County a little bit later on.
Yeah, I believe it will, too.
Anyone else have a question or anything?
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you.
So I recommend approval of the Russell County Middle School's Comprehensive School Improvement Plan as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the Russell County Middle School Comprehensive School Improvement Plan.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins-Bottle?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Review bids, Russell County Schools, athletic facility upgrades.
Let me just go over some of these highlights parts, and then I'm going to turn it over to, to Mr. Smith, and just to be blunt, disappointed with the bid openings last week that was held on December the 1st over here at the Lake Cumberland Regional College Workforce Center. We had the following packages: earthwork, hot mix, asphalt paving, athletic fields prep package, general trades, HVAC and plumbing, and electrical. The total price of the bids relative to that day was $7,111,350,000. Our whole initial BG1 that the board previously approved, and I know you all have had all this in your board packet, but I just think it's pertinent for the, for the public, that initial BG1 that was approved, that included the soft cost, which, and the contingency, of course, but the soft cost include those things like engineering, architect, construction management, all those fees, was $7,650,278. So you can see the problem there. And then per the state price contract that we didn't have to bid out, was towed by them with the bleachers, was $1,345,000. Their subgroup under that for the labor for the bleachers, binding branch, was $225,000. I'm rounding up a little bit. The turf part through the mods group, which is on the state price contract, was $1.7 million, and then musco, which is the lighting, was $358,000. We were very pleased with the price contract for the bleachers and the turf. It was actually under budget when we got that from the state price contract. The lighting was significantly higher than this initially, but we'd already worked on that, and spent a lot of time with them and changed things up on that. So just to be blunt, currently, this puts the athletic project approximately $3 million over budget from what we had. That is not out of the norm of some things that's happening across the strait, state on some construction projects. So today, we were not going to be prepared, we're not asking the board to accept or reject anything, this is just going to be informational pricing or informational. Obviously, we're going to need to meet again to discuss this. So we've got a lot of things in place. Ms. Carnes and I have had some phone conversations with Lincoln, with RSA advisors, Lincoln Thiner, Mr. Smith was in on one of those. Ms. Carnes and I've got some ideas on the, on the money part, and then we've been working on what we can do to bring down the cost, and that's what Mr. Smith is going to really elaborate on here now. So I will turn that over to you, Jonathan.
As Mr. Ford said, the bids we got back on bid day were not what we were hoping for, to say the least. It is part of the bidding climate and bidding market right now. You know, if y'all go anywhere, you know what pricing's doing, it's affecting everything. It's especially affecting construction right now. So pricing was a lot more than what we anticipated, but as he said, we've already started working. Actually, we have, with the bidders that we did receive bids from, we have entered into competitive negotiation with these bidders. Later went out to those bidders yesterday.
Yeah, describe that a little bit. On behalf of the board, I'd send a letter, we only have one, this is, I'm sorry, we only have one, unfortunately, we only have one bidder per package, which is never a good situation, for one thing. But where our district operates under multiple procurement, and because of such, then we can negotiate with that, because there's only one bidder. So I authorized that, and we, Mr. Smith sent out the letter that's, that's been attached to each of the bid packages, that notes that says, hey, I'll paraphrase, we need to work on your bid package. You know, what can we do to bring this back down?
And everybody has responded back to us positively. They are--
Sorry, we're working on it really over the weekend.
Already, we started actually working on it Thursday and Friday of last week, even after the bid. So all the bidders have responded back to us that they want to enter into competitive negotiation. Myself, along with Doug Gooch from AGE, and CMTA, and Chairman Kurt Barnhart, have already contacted all the bidders that we received bids from. Basically, what we're doing is put together a list of items that can either be changed, deleted from the project, and these are not items that's going to affect the overall scope of project. There is a few things that will have to get deleted, because, well, one thing for sure is, and this was never in the budget to start with, because it came in after our BG was already done, was the tennis courts. So the tennis courts, we are going to build a pad for the tennis court, the dirt pad, the subgrade, and that's really all we can do right now in this budget, because that was an item that was added after our budget was already established.
Yeah, that 7.5 initial BG1 did not include the tennis courts. We had that conversation afterwards, but it did not include the tennis courts.
And we were hoping, we went ahead and bid it, we were hoping to see how bids come in to hopefully include that, but at this time, the way the numbers are and the market is, we're just not able to do that work at the tennis courts. So, but we are going to build a pad for the tennis court, so the dirt work part of it will be done. So basically, when, when more money's available, the tennis courts will be done, all that has to be done is the drainage put in, the concrete poured, the surface go on, the nets and lights go up. So the base part of that will be done as part of this contract. We plan on leaving that in. We're making some changes to the amount of paving and where we're paving that's not going to affect the overall project, where there was some extra paving that we were going to do down in front of the bus garage, just because we were paving at this point, but we're going to cut some of that back. So what we're going to do is--
Carbing gutter.
Good carving gutter around the parking lot. So some of those type things, we're going to change the type of fencing that we're using is just all going to be vinyl, block-coated vinyl chain link fence. We're going to try to use some ornamental fence that is really nice fence, but obviously it costs more than regular chain link. We're going to try to use that around the baseball field, but everything else is going to have this black vinyl coated around the football field everywhere anyway, so we're just going to change it all to that, and that'll be a reduction in cost. We will prepare this list, and basically, we will send out a post-bid addendum to each one of these bidders, since they have agreed to negotiate, and we will get revised numbers back from these bidders, hopefully in the next few days, because we almost have our list prepared, ready to go out to these bidders, and hopefully by the 19th--
19th is our next regular board.
The next regular board meeting, the 19th, we'll have revised numbers back, hopefully more in line to be able to present to you all to either approve or reject bids, so.
There's not been one day, save, save for Sunday, I don't think I received any communication on Sunday, but I did on Saturday, from either Mr. Smith or some of the contractors saying, well, or the engineers said, you know, I think if we did this, it's like, I want to be really clear, like Mr. Jonathan said, it's not going to, we're still going to have turf on the field, we're still going to have a good facilities, but there's some things that, yeah, we would have liked to have had that, but it's probably not going to be possible on this budget, because we're at the point now, if we were to move forward on this budget, we would not be moving forward on the middle school.
As soon as--
As soon as what we wanted to, without some more funding cycles coming through. As soon as what we wanted to, without some more funding cycles coming through. So, working with Lincoln, and he will, he will be here on the nineteenth to discuss it then as well. There's some, for example, you know how you, if you pay down a principal, if you pay more on a house payment at the very beginning, your payments are going to be lower, right? And so, working with Marla and where our general fund is, and you, and you heard Mr. Montgomery, like one thing, I don't want to have a recurring cost of this to contribute general fund dollars every month, every year to a bond payment, because I would never want to put the district in that situation. But if we could put in, for example, a quarter of a million or three hundred thousand dollars right off the bat, and so that reduces that initial principal. There's things like that that I, I would feel comfortable with recommending to the board. So does Lincoln. So does Mr., Ms. Carnes. But I would not come back to you all and say, yeah, let's, let's contribute two hundred thousand dollars a year, because we don't know where the economy's going. We don't know, you know, state, you know, when things go up and down. We gave good, good raises last year. We have to sustain those raises. So, I would never put, put the board in that position, but I would feel comfortable around that quarter of a million, three hundred thousand out of general fund. And also, for the middle school, it's not something we want to do, but it is the option. You know, a lot of houses are thirty-year. Typically, school construction is twenty, twenty years, but now they're doing twenty-five and thirty years. And we could look at that for the middle school and still take care of the middle school. So, there's, yes, it was disappointing. Options, also, yes. And for more-
But also, one, one note I want you all to know, and I've had conversation with Chairman Carter Barnhart, with their architect, that he, he knows it'll be a challenge in order to get this middle school in with the remaining money we've got, but he said it is doable.
Yes, he did.
He did say that it's not, he said, "Every district across the state is dealing with this right now. It's not just you all. Every district is having a project bid. It's over budget, and they're having, trying to figure out how to make it work." So, he said it is still doable, even with what we've got for the athletic field project. He said, "To get you what you want for your middle school, it is still doable." So, it's not like it's off the table. It's just going to take a little more work.
Mr. Murray had a question or statement?
Yeah. I'm looking at here, I don't see what, no total bid. Well, it just says was three million under budget, and it shows was, was the bids actually ten million dollars?
It's on the, it's on that bid tabulation, Mr. Murray.
Bid tabulation sheet. There's a spreadsheet that shows the total.
Why don't they advertise the bids? You've just got one bid on each contract. I mean, that's-
Well, that's basically what we're going to do. We're going to negotiate.
Yeah, just tell them, we'll do it, get real.
Well, we're going to negotiate with these bidders in order to bring that number down.
Yeah, that, some of the prices look ridiculous on there.
Yeah.
Yeah. If it comes to the point where we can't make it work-
Yeah, then you reject bids.
Then you reject the bids.
Correct.
But, but I wanted, time and other reasons, I want to, I think it's important we try this option first before we reject bids and then just totally.
If you go through rejecting bids and go down that path, it's a lot longer process. And our window to get this done by next football season is doing this right now, because we're not starting. So, the longer we delay this start, and you still got this intake, the window just gets smaller. So, we want to keep that as open as possible.
And there's not a contractor that's listed here, say Motts. We've never worked with them before, that we haven't worked with, either in the district, well, in the district, we've worked with every one of these, and certainly, Mr. Smith has with each one of them.
My way of thinking is, middle school is the most important thing. Athletics can, it's not where our kids shine. I mean, they do shine there, but it's not what's most important. So, if it anyway affects building the new middle school, we, we just, one has to be pushed back, push that, that one back. But if we can make it work.
And that's our, that's our goal, to make both of these work.
Of all the conversations I've had during the bid opening, you asked Mr. Delk, I, I, we were halfway through, and I said, "Well, this is horrible," because I could tell right off the bat. From the way I felt that day, from the way I feel now, especially after conversations with Lincoln, with RSA, and the contractors' willingness, I felt a lot better, Ms. Wicker. Because I said that same statement that day, the decision's going to have to be either made for the athletic project or the middle school. Based upon those current numbers, we couldn't do both at that time. I feel better now, yeah, than what I did. Absolutely.
We have faith in you, Jonathan.
We're already working on it.
Well, he's been working on it. He, he, he started working on it before he left that day for the bid opening. But we were really pleased with those state price contracts. I mean, they were super.
Other than the lighting, they were above our budget.
Other than the lighting, but they came down after we had some conversations with them. Sometimes, they want to sell you a Cadillac, Mr. Murray, but the Chevy will do.
Yeah, that's true.
Or go hard and get the Cadillac.
Or a Ford might do. So, as, again, this was informational, not to accept, reject or anything, just because we did not have the time from our bid opening last week and after the bids came in to feel comfortable bringing you all something to, to work with.
But our plan is to have that ready by the nineteenth, maybe as fast as possible.
Yes. Any other questions or concerns or comments about it? I'm as, I'm as disappointed as anyone. We all were that day.
You can also put it out there. Anybody wants to volunteer money, we take it.
Mr. Larry, you have anything to add?
I've nothing.
First time ever. Put that down.
I can't find it.
Jonathan said, "Put that in a minute, Larry."
Larry, you going to work on it?
He's already been, she said, "You're going to work on it."
How could that be?
He's already been working on it.
Seven, a six, three, it's only seven.
He's got some, he's got some good ideas, too. I appreciate our construction management team there at Branscoms, because they, they did hit the ground running, start working on it.
I'm going to do that on the rest.
So, again, no action for that one.
Okay. Any public comment?
And just for a public comment, at two forty-five this afternoon, Branscoms and Chairman Carter Barnhart, architect, we are meeting with the middle school faculty and staff just for a listening session for the middle school. Just, you know, "Hey, teachers, what do you all, what do you like? What, what, you know, what, somebody else at another school have you seen?" Those types of things. And I appreciate them wanting, wanting that feedback from the middle school faculty, staff, administration. I think they're probably looking forward to that, aren't they, Mr. Ackerman? Have made it. Yeah.
Russell County adjourned. Do you want to keep them?
Okay, you have a second?
We're going to do it.
All in favor to adjourn?
Give me the badge.
Are y'all in favor to adjourn?
Yes, I'm.
That's what she said.
I've got, they need to sign that. I need their signatures.
We got it.